Just to the rear.
On the on the back.
Just to the rear.
The important thing is it needs to be stored and and I think that really would be this, you know, the city, you should rely on the city to take that down. You don't want to have coaches, hard type coaches, they're giving their time. And you can say, oh, by the way, last guy to use the field in the playoffs has to take all the fences down. That's not fair. I know, but that's not fair.
To the, okay, so we we have consensus on number three. Okay. Uh, number four, there was no issue. Number five, the foul poles.
Well, the foul poles we have.
Well, that's on number five, so we'll go to the next page. So, number five talks about installing two new fifteen foot tall foul poles at the right and left outfield corners, okay? And planning commission says that they have to be removed or upon request of the town. Permanent foul poles are consistent with the ballot measure. And so even if, what what's interesting to me in this argument from the Little League is that even if it's appropriate to change what the voters approve, uh, there's no practical solution. Only safe removable foul poles that they found are twenty-two to thirty feet high, which is almost double, well, thirty feet is double, uh, what would be typically installed for the season.
They'd be fifteen foot long.
And I I was gonna say, I mean, is that, is that, why is that? Why is that?
We have no idea. We've searched and we haven't found any.
Is it the leverage? Is it that you have to go further down into? You don't leave it standing taller in above ground, right?
Usually they're four to, if I recall correctly, four to five feet subgrade and all of the pole lengths were twenty-two feet high. They only make the little foul poles that are either subgrade or higher.
See, they have something on top that's heavy, so that could go a little further down.
For the level.
Well, because on the inside, the ball, if it's going in, you may not be able to see where the line is, so it hits a, it's a, a stream, so, so they're a little top heavy. And they do catch the wind a little bit, although they're, they're meshed, but they are top heavy, so they have to go down a little bit further. That's, that's why.
But I guess they're not, uh, they don't come in sections.
No.
So you'd have to find a thirty foot length to store if you pull it down.
I understand because if they put in removable foul poles, it would increase the height by two feet, seventy, up from fifteen to seven feet. And I think I read that somewhere, but I'm not sure what it means.
It says seven feet.
Yeah, subgrade is twenty-two feet, fifteen to twenty-two.
Seven feet, seven feet tall.
It'd be taller.
What they're saying is seven feet tall.
Okay, well, in my mind, it's worth it, it's worth it to have these removable. They're very up there, and I don't think we want them there when we're not playing baseball.
Yeah, but I don't think that, like, I, what I think I heard Mike say is that you just dig a deeper hole. I mean, they're not necessarily taller above ground than what the comment would be, right?
Well, then we need to investigate that.
The removable.
Mark, Mark, our, Nancy, Mark, that can speak to this better than you can.
I'm down with a little bit of research here, and the, uh, they, they need to sit in the ground some distance for stability, obviously. Fifteen feet out of the ground is, is what I've looked into. I haven't looked into the other heights. But that sits, that can sit in a sleeve that goes down about six, seven feet, something like that. I spoke with the vendors about how you remove, and we installed these and they basically equated to raising the flag at your team. So what you've got is this large unstable mass that you're trying to drop down into this sleeve.
So you have, you need like a crane or a truck or something.
Or a carrie over there, what?
Carrie.
I think I fully confirm it. That would be Mike. I, I will say, I, I, if I could put in two bits here, foul poles are obviously heavy, and the concern on my part is, is that having removable without having cranes or any, any additional equipment to remove them, it doesn't make sense to me. These would be two poles, and I think we'd have no fencing around them. They'd be sitting out in right and left field. I, I just, for the interest of safety and every other factor that I can hear here, I can't see removable, um, working for us. And I think that the permanent ones are gonna be the best as far as public safety, maintenance, storing, or lack of.
They're well, they're talking about removing them at the end of the season, and we've got plenty of heavy equipment there that can remove those without any difficulty whatsoever. This, this should not be a big issue. These foul poles should be removable, and yep, they're heavy, but we've got heavy equipment for that kind of stuff.
We do?
Yeah.
Maybe I could ask the, uh, staff on this. Uh, Mike, can you comment?
Not, not knowing the weight, uh, but assuming that is heavy, we do not currently have equipment that would be able to do that.
And if you had equipment like that, if you had to, or rent equipment, what would it do to the turf? I mean, it would have to be driven out there or pulled out there.
Retired. Well, I'm, I'm looking at a website here. I just said, what's, foul, removable foul poles, and I'm not sure that we actually have done all the research, okay? Before we're, they, they have sleeved ones, they have ones that are, uh, foul poles of quick and easy transformation. So how about we just agree that we're gonna do some research and then we, you know, exhaustive research, and they, and, but, they're not cheap. It could cost anywhere from fourteen hundred dollars to twenty-five ninety-five. Okay? So, I mean, seriously, let's, yeah, yeah, it's not, yeah, not twenty-five dollars. I, I just think that we should look into it. I mean, if this is an issue that we think could be a safety issue, we should either bring them, you know, you know, get, bring them in. I, I think the, the key thing here is they have to be, you know, high visibility, obviously. They got, normally they're yellow so that you can see them. You know, to make them safe, then we'd have to put padding around them, um, which, which normally would be red or dark blue. You know, if we could take them down, it would be great. Let's just do some research, and if it turns out that we can't, hey, it's an impossible thing, or we can't find something that will be stable and a good investment, then, then you guys come back and, and let us know. But I would just like to say, Mike.
So shall we?
A forklift would take these out without any difficulty whatsoever.
A forklift?
Yeah.
So ultimately, like I've said, we've researched, it's something that we're open to. The problem with the sleeve is, it's generally, from what I've found, it's a four-foot high sleeve that's permanently anchored, which in my opinion is almost more dangerous than having a foul.
Oh, I agree. If we only take half of it out and still out of the ground, I agree with you.
It's, it's something where I think the town and everyone, yes, we can compromise, we can look at things, it's, you know, not hard of a task digging the heels in, it just needs to make sense for the town, because if they're removable, we, we simply can't do it. We don't have the wherewithal to do that.
Yeah, okay. But just, you know, we can, if we just look into it a little bit more.
So that might be some direction to staff.
Yeah, that's the same with the seating one, to, in between now and the next meeting, we talk about.
And then, um, okay, so we're gonna move on to the item number six. Installation of a scoreboard, okay? So the application says to install a new permanent electronic scoreboard, three feet tall by eight feet wide, near the left field foul pole in a location that can be viewed from the seating area. Scoreboard will be mounted on a pole with ten-foot clearance under, resulting in overall height of thirteen feet above grade. So the planning commission recommendation is no permanent scoreboard shall be located along either foul line. As an option, the scoreboard could be designed as part of the main seating structure or a portable scoreboard that would be stored at the end of each game. Uh, staff says that a permanent electronic scoreboard is consistent with the ballot measure, and the Little League's, um, feedback is that, uh, the construction of an electronic scoreboard was noted in the impartial analysis of the Measure M. Scoreboard is designed to be permanent. The design drawings on all of the websites, uh, was clearly shown to be located in the left field corner, and it should be in the left field corner for two reasons. It would have less glare, and this would be more easily seen from the seating area. It would not be easily seen from Watkins Avenue, um, and they're proposing to paint it black. No, paint the back of the scoreboard green and mask it with small trees. So we need to discuss this. It seems that three by eight, to me, is less than the size of a sheet of plywood. Isn't a sheet of plywood four by eight?
Sheet of plywood is four by eight.
And, and, but one other, but the point you've, your, your consensus so far has been the fencing needs to be removable along the foul lines. The foul poles, we're gonna look and deliberate on what needs to be removable. So if the foul poles are removable, now you've got a scoreboard, sitting out there by itself if it's permanent.
What's the location?
Yeah, it's on the left-hand field, left-hand, left-hand side.
It's in the left field, uh, but it's to the, it's to the foul side of, uh,
Of the foul.
Of the foul line.
And it's positioned away from Watkins.
It's towards the, the stadium. I guess my, my question, I looked at the architectural study and I realized some of it was just, um, I'm sure you just, you're gonna put trees in, I understand, okay? It's not a question, you guys have been very open and honest, and we appreciate that. I guess the, when I look at this, at the seating, and I look at where the trees are, and I look at where the scoreboard is, I think a third of the people can't see the scoreboard because you have a tree right there at the end, and so to point that out, we might wanna consider that. Also, I've taken the city manager out, when we've looked at where the scoreboard is expected to be, and, and to me, the games are in the afternoon, except for the ones on Saturday, um, and, you know, the sun is setting kind of right where they are, and so it would be difficult to see. To me, it would make more sense to have it, if you're gonna have one, have it in right field, you get better visibility. Um, there's really no playing field out there in the right field that, you know, you're not gonna be encroaching on that for the most part, because it, it butts up against where, say, the, the tennis courts would be, so that's not really usable space. It's still visible by everybody, and, and that may be a good compromise, but I guess it was the question of, you know, a quick disconnect, because it's gotta be electronic, and you guys are gonna control it, I assume, from, from the stadium or the covered seating area. So, so, um, you know, there, of course, there'd be weather issues and stuff like that, so, you know, I don't, and I haven't had a chance to do this research on the quick disconnect. So if you consider that.
Lance, you can comment.
Yeah, I, I never introduce myself. I'm Mark Seltzer with Calendar Associates. So I do appreciate the time. I think what I could do is just offer some clarification to help with the discussion.
Sure.
Just so that we're all seeing this the same way. What we're talking about is a scoreboard which is shown down here. The large existing oak is shown here, and that's a pretty good representation of its canopy, so we should have a fairly, fairly unobstructed view. That's, that's our expectation there.
Well, my, my comment was, you see, you have a little accent tree, okay, which you said is gonna be a magnolia-type tree.
Oh, right here.
Right at the end of it, which is great, but, so the people that are sitting in that third of the stadium aren't gonna be able to see, for the most part. There's gonna be a tree there.
That's the kind of thing we fix in the next generation of plans. But that's a good point. I mean, you're, you're right, there, there's potential for that obscuring the scoreboard. Uh, so I didn't wanna speak to the question regarding where it's located, either down the left field or down the right field line, and I, I wanna point out the north arrow, which is right here. So the afternoon, you know, the sun is coming across the field this way, and I, I know from, uh, from firsthand experience that when you get sun on the face of these scoreboards, it really makes it very difficult to read, and you, I can submit to you if it's, if it's helpful in this discussion, language provided by the manufacturers that, that advise against locating where they're gonna be struck by the sun and have glare. Uh, it's just, it's just the nature of these scoreboards. They are, they aren't like what you see at a major sports venue. They don't work, they don't work well with sun.
But my, but my comment was with regards to, the sun will be, because I thought the city manager out there about at the time your games would be, and the sun was actually right over where it was gonna be, so the glare of the sun will be coming from the back, and, and it'll be difficult to, and you'll have this, this small scoreboard, and it may be difficult to see. So one of the questions could be, if the scoreboard is for, um, you don't, if you don't think it's wise to move it, you know, another opportunity or a question would be, who is the scoreboard for? Is it for the spectators? Is it for the players, or is it for both? Um, because if it's for just the spectators, you could actually hang it from the facade. Uh, if it's for the players, you know, obviously, you know, you could have a dual-sided one, but, uh, but, I mean.
I, I kinda lost you there, the facade, hang it on what facade?
In the front of the.
You're talking right in front.
For the spectators?
Yeah, yeah.
Like, from a coaches' and players' perspective, that's, I think, I don't think that would be.
Ultimately, um, if, if we were to put it in right field, I think we could make that work instead. My thoughts, as I'm looking at this, are, well, we could probably put another tree next to it to try to prevent some of the glare. Uh, we could figure out.
Yeah, right, right field for me.
And, and the reason I say that is, you know, if my kids play in my SO, my kids play in that field, I get it, although that area is never used, I've never seen that particular area used because it's so dry and hot. Putting it in right field, I think, would be a, a compromise, and we could find a creative solution to share it.
Okay.
I'd like to, if I can qualify that a little bit, I, I really am genuinely concerned about what the glare will do if it's on the right field line, so if you'll permit us to do a little further investigation in the right ways. I sure wouldn't want to provide us with that literature as well.
Sounds good.
And options, permanent or removable?
Permanent.
I, I would like to say that I attended the last planning commission meeting, and at that time, the planning commission brought up removal. It seems to me that you said at that meeting you would look into it, you would look into see what it would take to make that scoreboard removable. How have you looked into it? Have you come up with any ideas that would make it removable? Because I think you committed to that, to the planning.
We did not commit to that. We did not commit to removal.
Did I ask the planning commission chairman?
We said we would consider all options, because a removable scoreboard is really, really difficult. You're talking steel eye beers.
Have you, have you considered that option? And if you consider the option, what would the result mean? What would the cost be?
So we did a little bit of preliminary look, uh, investigation there, and what we found to this point in time is, is something that it'd be difficult to recommend, just because it's not a, it's, it's not really, um, the same commercial caliber as the commercial board, as the, as the, as what we're showing now. Um, that would be a big concern of mine.
See, my view in this is very simple, that when you're finished playing baseball, we need to return the park as much as we can to the state it was in before you started playing baseball. So in other words, anything that's left up there, foul poles or anything else, are, are gonna be an eyesore, and especially a scoreboard. So I want, I want you to look into what it would take to make that scoreboard removable. I'm not saying if you come up with, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or something else, we might be, we need to know what it would take.
Okay, so, so I think that, um, my view is that it appears that you're flexible in being able to maybe relocate it in light of, uh, looking into maybe removing the foul poles, especially if we're gonna remove the fencing. It would be, uh, you know, if you don't have the fencing secured to the foul poles, the foul poles are gonna be kind of sticking up there, so that would have to be kind of looked into, removing them. And then the scoreboard, um, I know it's gotta be electronic and everything. I, I think that it's really not an eyesore. It should be permanent, it should be constructed such that it is a permanent, uh, hardwired, uh, unit, and I think in that area, more on that right field line, it is really out of the way, and it's out of the way of most of the other park uses, and will probably never be seen by any other park user unless you are, uh, coming to the, um, baseball game. So that's my personal feeling, so I don't think that, um, a removable scoreboard in three by eight seems to be pretty small to me. It's not even the size of a piece of plywood, four by eight, which I can fit in the back of my Yukon, okay?
I thought you said it was both.
I do, but my husband takes it most time to commute, so anyway. So I think then if we.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just to be really clear, staff did, in looking at the ballot measures, interestingly enough, mostly the opposition ballot measure, city attorneys impartial analysis was a little unclear, even to the guy who wrote it, as to whether or not it referred to permanent, but I want to be very clear, it did never said it should go in left field, so that's totally the town's prerogative to decide where it goes.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, okay. Um, so then the rest of the, um, chart, uh, down to item number eleven is all, no issue, everything's been looked out, there's nothing to discuss from council level. Um, then going on other items, the maintenance, and that's an issue that we need to talk about, uh, because that will be part of the facility agreement. Who maintains? Who pays? How? Uh, and, um, that issue. And then time of use is the other, uh, issue, but it says that there's no issue. You, and Little League proposes the same times as outlined in the existing.
No, the thing, the thing on the time was how long it would be.
The term, the term, right, which, which is part of the facilities.
So we're on the contract maintenance?
Okay, so the contract.
Um, I can go.
Oh, please go, yes.
Okay, um, I've, I've brought up, I guess, last year as well as this year, several times with the city man, this city manager, previous city managers, you know, I, I really think that the responsibility for maintaining the park is the towns. Um, I do think that if we have teams playing there, they have specific needs that are, you know, as far as if they need the grass cut, because I understood that was an issue at one time, the Little League needed the grass cutter, the, they requested that the infield get cut twice a week so that, you know, you'd have a reasonable, uh, you know, speed of the ball going through the infield, et cetera. Um, and, and at that time, we were strapped for cash, uh, and, and perhaps not doing as good a job as a town maintaining our park as we have, um, as we are now. Actually, there's a lot of improvements going on in the park, and we actually have a, you know, a third-party contractor who takes task orders, and we kind of direct them, and, and they would love to actually expand some of their work. So I think that if, you know, if, if Little League needs, needs special requests, and, and I would think we could even say, hey, I don't know, I can't speak for them and, and the city manager, but as far as even, you know, putting the lines down and things like that, I know as a coach that was always a pain. We might, you know, have the town do that, and I think really maintaining it so it's consistent with the rest of the, of the, of the park is really our responsibility, and moreover, um, you know, there is the obligation of maintaining the restrooms, you know, with, the measure, you know, there's just a couple of words, say that here are some facilities, and that they will be available for all town users, all park users. So I understand we're gonna, you know, make sure there's, there's some exclusivity with regards to specific playing times for Little League, and that's very, very reasonable, but I, it, it would be unreasonable to, to, to build and have restrooms out there that after, when the season's over, we lock them up and the people that are playing tennis can't use them. So, you know, we're going to need, and I don't see, you know, a, a desire by a coach to come out on a rainy November day to clean the restrooms. So I, I think really, I, I'd like to have staff and Little League consider that, that the town will take care of that, the town will be responsible to Little League to do things in accordance with their requests. You know, obviously, we would need to be reimbursed for that, um, but it's, you know, we do those things on task orders, so you'd, it'd be essentially a fixed price per task, not, not, uh, you know, hey, we're just gonna send you an arbitrary bill. That's, that's essentially how our MCE contract is set up right now, that we say, hey, there's a, there's a fixed fee for doing a certain thing, like setting up this room or doing certain things, so we could probably work something like that up. That, to me, would then say, we don't need to have, you don't have to have your lawnmower, you don't have to have coaches who are donating their time, or parents to, you know, come out and do volunteer work and things like that, you know, the town would be doing all that. And then taking down, when the season's over, the fences would come down, you wouldn't have to handle that. So it, to me, it makes all sorts of sense that it's our park, and that we have responsibility for the park, and I, and I, you know, I, I urge my fellow council members and, and the city manager and the planning department to, to seriously consider that, because it's, I've been bringing it up for a while, and I think it's important, so, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Dobbie?
Yeah, I, I generally agree, and of course, when the baseball is not being played there, MCA or whatever contract we have, they're gonna maintain it. And it's very important to me for the baseball that, that the grass is not just maintained during the baseball season, but the grass is maintained when the baseball people aren't there. Otherwise, when it gets to the baseball season, we could have no grass, or we could have terrible grass. So my feeling is very simple, that we, our contractors, maintain field. If the baseball people want the grass cut every day, that's fine, as long as they are willing to pay for it. If they wanna cut it once a week, that's their call. So what we need to do is we need to have our contract be totally responsible for cleaning the restrooms, charging for whatever it is, and an agreed amount, and maintaining the grass in the baseball field. One of the complaints I've had from many people is that previously, when the Little League were maintaining the grass in the field, it was in terrible shape. And therefore, we do it this way, we're gonna keep the grass in good shape for you to play baseball.
Place me.
Well, I'm pretty finicky when it comes to my lawn, so I can understand when it comes to baseball and finickiness, and I, I'm sure that you guys probably want lines and stripes and from the stands, and that's perfect. And I agree with you, but I think we can provide that for you as far as the grass is concerned. My concern is, is that having a mower, kids around, and there's this public safety issue, if we are responsible for that as a city, we can work with you, we can work with the people that we contract out. You guys can do the striding, as far as I'm concerned, do it the way you want, put your stuff away, but as far as the mowing is concerned, we can work with you to give it to what is acceptable to us and which would be acceptable to you. And, uh, that would be the cost beared upon you guys, um, but we'll do, and we'll work with you to get what you guys want.
Well, they would only pay for the extraordinary stuff that they want.
Right, right.
We have to cut the grass on a regular basis, that's, we cut the grass whether it's season or not. If they want a second mowing of a specific area, that's the only thing that they would have to pay for.
Right, anything out of the norm.
So if, if I could.
Yeah.
And to, uh, Councilmember Dobbie's point, it was not the Little League who was taking care of it, and the field was atrocious. If you go out there now, go look at the field.
Yeah.
Go look at the field. Go look at the weeds and look how the baseline is encroached. We've been in there two years ago, and we spent over fifteen thousand dollars to redo the infield. If it's not mowed adequately, you start to get uneven areas and surfaces. We have gone out there and done more edging, more lifting of the lip and removing dirt and lowering it back down to make it safer and smoother. If we are then going to be charged to basically make this field safer, which we've already proposed doing with this nearly, now our estimates are three-quarters of a million-dollar project, I, I think that's pretty atrocious, to be quite honest. I think having a mower there to where we can have our volunteers, we have a fields committee, we train them on it, we have our own liability insurance, and we do it on off-hours, to go out there and help mow and maintain the infield grass and the outfield grass for all park users? I, I think that's more than fair, to be quite honest, and in previous years, regardless of budgets, Councilmember Whitmer, the field has been atrocious. I've been out there during the soccer season, when I coach my kids out there, I spring my ankle more at Hobart Palmer than I have any other field in Menlo Park or African. It's, that's simple.
See, I'm, I'm agreeing with you. I'm agreeing the field is in terrible shape.
So, but we want to be good stewards and help care for it, is what we're saying.
I think the best way to keep it that way is for us to maintain it. Now, maybe we can make some compromises as far as the charges go, but we have to maintain it when you're not there, and, and that's very important, and I want us to be, I want us to maintain that field in such a fashion that you really, really are very proud of that.
I think we're talking about a couple of different things.
Right.
I think that, um, Mike's talking about when, uh, the baseball season is in season, he'd like to maintain it for his players, and you're talking about when it's not in season.
No, I'm talking about both.
Meaning, to be the, but if, if he doesn't maintain the field to a good quality. But if, if he doesn't maintain the field to a good quality for his, uh, players, then, you know, that's bad. That's bad for the Little League, that's bad for his reputation, and he says that it's in good, really good condition now, and I think it is. I don't think it's in atrocious condition.
If he doesn't maintain it, then when the baseball people are not there, it's gonna be a mess as well. My, my feeling is very simple, we're not gonna charge a lot for maintaining the grass, at least I don't think we are. And I think this would be a, like, flower-depress solution, so that you can help grass that you're really proud of. I, I, I would think that, if I just would add, you know, I, I think that if, if in fact, a playing surface is not adequate, then, then we need to, you know, let our town staff know that something's not being done, it's the same as, you know, I took the city manager out just a couple of weeks ago, and we walked around the park, and we talked about all the things that needed to get done, and he's starting, and, you know, we're doing those things. So I think that, you know, we're not saying, hey, it's all gonna be perfect, you don't have to worry about it, just say, hey, you guys take care of it. You know, you're gonna need to provide feedback, it's the same as with anything, so, so, you know, my, my thoughts are, is, is that, you know, the maintenance of the facility, you know, and the park is, is our responsibility, and we should do it, but we need to do it to your specifications. How and where it gets charged, you know, it needs to be consistent with what, with what, uh, you know, if, if we're doing special things for AYSO and not charging them for field, field, uh, you know, cutting the grass a couple of times like they've asked us to, then, then we shouldn't be doing it for AYS, for, for Little League either, so we have to be consistent. So you could, you know, you come up with something, I would hope.
I, maybe I'm not seeing it correctly, but I think that cutting a baseball is different from cutting, um, the soccer field, or the, you know, playing field out there. And during the, um, playing season, I think the, what I hear AYS, uh, the Little League saying is that they have volunteers who've been specifically trained to do it the way they want it to have, have it done, but then what happens, my question is, what happens when the season is over? You don't have those volunteers go out and keep mowing it two, two or three times a week, you know, it just, it, it goes on a weekly schedule. And at that point, I think the town should pick it up and mow it, just to keep the grass mowed on whatever weekly schedule they do, but when your season starts up again, then you, uh, take it back over to do your special mowing.
What, what if the Little League was responsible for the infield, and the town was responsible for the outfield?
Well, ultimately, if I could, I, I, I agree with your approach of what you said, Elizabeth, it, it's, our whole thing is, we have meetings year-round, and we have our fields guys go out and look and say, okay, what do we need to do to quote-unquote put the field to bed after the end of the season, is what we always say. And then we go back in the following year and do work, and then we come back in January, and we do this with all of our fields, city schools, et cetera, and we see, and we put in, we say, okay, here are the spots we need to focus on, and we get it prepped for the season. That generally takes place in December or January. So all we're proposing is that we have the ability to go out and help maintain, and be good stewards of the field. It will not be a detriment to cleaning, I mean, in fact, we believe it will benefit everyone, including lacrosse and softball, by helping to maintain the outfield as well.
What's your arrangement with Menlo Park purchase?
We go out there, Dave, David Mooney is the, the head of it, and Todd Zio, we work with them all the time, and say, hey, here's what we need to do, here's what we're going to do, can we get the schedule? Do you mind if we do it? And generally, the only time it's a, do you mind if we do it, is when we're talking fertilizers, and then we have to present them with everything, what's a single fertilizer, what are we using?
Chemicals and stuff.
What time are we going to do it? Then we set the, and adjust the water schedules to make sure it doesn't water too soon, so we work with the town on the big side. If we wanna go out there and clean the apron, and weedy, and cut the lines, and do more maintenance, they, they say, hey, great, thank you.
Happy, happy. I, I, my only concern was related to safety, and I understand that you guys create, have a rider, I know historically you guys have done an excellent job, so, uh, we're just trying to facilitate making sure that you guys get what you want as far as maintenance-wise, because again, I'm a lawn person, so I understand certain height during the game affects the air quality, so I get it, so, and I think that, you know, as far as arguments, and I think that you guys can handle that.
Okay.
Off-season, you probably, you can go by and make sure the field is.
We do.
To a certain extent, so.
Sorry.
There, all yours.
All right. Um, Councilmember Widmer has to excuse himself, he has, uh, urgent business he has to go to attend to, so.
Right, okay, so, uh, now, I, you know, that's my last, you know, key issue on this, and so I'd like, you know, really, the staff to consider, you know, what can we do to make them happy with regards to, to being able to maintain the field, that it does cut back the sites, and then it gives us the responsibility of taking the fences and things like that up and down.
So.
The other items, you know, I think that we're not voting on those, and then I explained to the, to the city manager, we've gone through the whole pack, and so he knows, my input opposite my book, and he's got my input on the whole of the following hours.
So when you were out, what we were asking is how you did, how does the Little League deal with Menlo Park purchase?
Right.
And, you know, I think that we could look into that and maybe have a.
Okay, great.
Similar arrangement.
Thank you.
Good.
That would work, okay.
All right, thanks for, you know, listening to what we had to say, and I apologize, I can't snip out the rest of it, but.
Thank you, Bill.
All right, good.
Thanks.
Talk to you later.
See you all in two weeks.
Or sooner.
Fall.
Yeah.
All right, see you later, thanks.
Okay, all right. Um, so I think at this juncture, um, if I just, um, on page five of twelve of the field agreement, it looks to me at the very top, there might be a typo, one of them shall select, that should be, or approve any contractor selected. I don't know. So we'll clean that up. Any, anything else that we were?
I think you've been through the table, perhaps I can run through them really quickly, just so we make sure staff has the same, and Mike chimed in, you're, you're hearing some of the difference that I'm reading. Uh, with respect to seating, there's no consensus, we're gonna go back to Little League and try and work something out between now and the next meeting. With respect to dugouts, permanent covering was okay, new fencing along foul lines, um, foul lines to foul poles, okay, but needs to be removed, removable back to the bullpens on either side. Uh, outfield fence, no issue there. Uh, foul poles, no real consensus, we're gonna look, Little League's gonna look a little bit more on removable foul poles, come back again on, on the eighteenth.